I have six thirty, I'm gonna call to order the Board of Alderman Regular Meeting for Monday, January sixteenth at six thirty. Roll call, please.
Alderman Motley here, Alderman Hudson.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins.
Present.
Alderman Deckard.
Here.
Alderman Rogers.
Present.
Alderman Magley.
No.
If I can understand the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That moves us to make a note that we have no special presentations of item four or public hearing. Either of those are elected in this evening, which moves us to six comments from citizens. So, at this time, we'll open for comments for citizens. I have comments. Last week, there were some comments made that are in the minutes, and if the minutes are correctly written, and I have no reason to suspect that they're not, there are some gross errors in what was said. For one, it says that the city pays six thousand dollars on the salary for the chamber director. And that is not correct. The city pays six thousand dollars for services rendered. They cannot pay the salary. We did not say salary. We said we were giving them at this time as our part, as a partner, six thousand dollars. You ever pretty sure we agreed that it was six thousand dollars?
The contract.
They do what they have to go towards that. But this says that the statement was made that they get six thousand dollars. And then somebody asked if they could, the city could provide benefits. The chamber director is not a city employee.
Right, that's being certified.
We told them that. That was somebody that was here that we told them that was an option. It's possible that if the city wanted to hire an economic development person, they could do so, and that person could possibly be both the chamber director and the city employee. However, there are some conflicts between that also. The chamber, what the chamber does, that's a business organization. They represent the business community. They don't represent the city per se. There are things where the interest, where the chamber and the city have common interests, but not, but there are also areas where they don't have common interests. So, it's probably not a good idea for the same person to hold both of those positions. I think that speaks for all of us. We know it's an entertaining idea at this point in any way, shape, or form. We're not looking into that. Not even at a venture time zone.
Yeah, at the meeting, they were just asking if it was a possibility if that person could be...
About being put on.
Provided with insurance.
This is now a sticky point for them, I mean, a little bit of trying to... Yeah, hire and... And they carry the hours of part-time anyway, but they're not a city employee, so there would be no way that, even if they were. I mean, there's a contract between the city and the chamber, and what the board members of the chamber need to do is look at that contract and see what services are provided. Obviously, they don't know, because they wouldn't have asked that question if they did understand that. That's probably very true. I would suggest going to their next meeting and bringing this up in comments to them and make sure they're getting on the ball or even what they're supposed to. Yeah, I've been both a chamber board member and a board member here. I've been through this. I know what those roles are. So, anyway, that's what the minutes say, and I just wanted to point out that there were some gross errors in what was said.
Those were requests, not something we agree with.
We respond to those things, but that's because they brought them up, so. Okay. All right, thank you. Yep. Thank you. Any other comments from citizens? Seeing none, I'll close comments from citizens at this point. It moves to item seven, which is Barbara West's report update.
Hi, everybody.
Excuse me.
I'll hit the drinking water quick first. We do have a pay request in your packet for the drinking water. Hopefully, you guys can, I see a lot of the correct papers showing here. Martin General Contractors pay request for ten thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars. It's been a while since they've had a pay request. This is for HBAC, has nothing to do with SLAKER. And so, we recommend going forward with this. They've done the work. I mean, they've earned this ten thousand nine seventy-six. So, we recommend moving forward with that. Relative to the SLAKER, we are asking V and R to if we can go ahead and procure the, procure a replacement, and we're waiting for an answer on that. So.
For the SLAKER, right?
You have provisions for the SLAKER for emergencies to procure items like that. We're trying to exercise that and proceed with it. The lead time is about a year. So, we want to go and get that one in. Any questions on drinking water? Okay, I think you're gonna be approving that on item ten B. Moving on to wastewater, this is the one we have four parts. We've got quite a bit going on tonight. Not physically out in the field, there's been a little bit going on out there, but more paperwork than anything. We've got, part one, we've got a pay request coming in from CNS Construction on work they've done a long time ago. We've got a pay request for, let me see if I can find it, sixty-five thousand four hundred fifty dollars eighty-eight cents. We also have a change order for CNS Construction. For... Negative sixty-five thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars ninety-two cents. Okay? So, both of those, I can explain that the change order, the pay request is something they earned a long time ago. They're just now getting, they weren't in her to get paid, so they're just now asking for that. The change order reflects actual quantities. You pay them every unit that they do, and you don't pay for anything, they don't do. So, they're done, almost. They're not one hundred percent, but they're almost done, so we change ordered out all the stuff that didn't happen. Now, I will tell you, the sixty-five thousand, that's great business for the budget. Don't celebrate crazy, you know, crazy tonight on that, because Schmidt, your next part, they had to do more work because of CNS did less. They didn't do as many foot, it's the connection between those two parts. CNS was gonna do more of it, Schmidt was gonna do less of it. They flipped that. So, I expect that this will offset about a fifty-some change order on Schmidt plus. So, maybe the ten thousand in your favor at this point is what I'm seeing. So, right now, we're in the right direction, but it's still looking great, okay? Would you have a negative change order in back for your review?
But they submitted on that scope, CNS did, now they're giving up part of that scope. They're giving back the money, giving back the money. But I want to make sure that giving back the money doesn't mean we paid more now, because it's been given to another party this time that did not bid that scope for work.
It's, right now, it's looking like it's less.
I understand that. I hear that. That's what I'm hearing tonight, but I don't want that to end up being seventy thousand dollars on the other side, so I'll expect you guys to bear notice of that as you're going through that with them. That's just, I'm just saying. So, I understand it. I'm excited. I don't want to rain on your parade. I understand that seventy thousand dollars. But we've heard this, you know, in these situations where they're taking on something with cost and everything else, I don't know what the work is and the costs are to being done, right? So, we just want to make sure we stay on top of that.
We will. We do have been writing, so we know what that is. It was fifty-four thousand.
Good, okay.
So.
So, they gave us a bid for what they're picking up?
They did.
Good.
It was actual cost. And we asked for it beforehand, and they waited, played through, asked for it seven or eight or twenty rounds.
Yeah.
We've got it after the fact, and that was at their risk, because we don't do change orders after the fact. We're doing it before they do the work. They submitted a bunch after, thankfully, if, but if it was a hundred and fifty-four, we would've said.
So, you've got, it's a hard number.
It's, they committed to. So, that's good. Item, okay, so part, what was that? Part one, we talked about. Part two is Schmidt irrigation. They're asking for a pay request on that as well. So, that'll get in your packet tonight. And again, I should say this more often. When we get pay requests, we don't just pass it on to you guys, put it in your packet. There's all, this guy right here has all kinds of back and forth. When you get something in your packet, it means we agree with it. Okay, so you can rest assured we've been at the thing, and we're not checking up when you overpay. So, you owe them forty-seven thousand one twenty-one twelve. Okay? And then part three is Fisher grading. They submitted us a pay request late Wednesday, two days before the packet was due. We thought it might move forward upon inspection by myself this afternoon. I want to pull that out. I don't want to proceed with the Fisher grading at pay request. What I saw was not complete, and so, we're hoping that it was, but it wasn't. There was some activity, by the way. Fisher was on site since we last met. They did two things out there, but there was some activity. Wasn't a lot of activity, but they were back.
And that's what this would be related to, this request would be?
Be related to activity that we've had since the last meeting, but it wasn't satisfactory, so we're gonna have to take that out of the packet. Okay, part number...
Before we move on from that one, I am curious, so I haven't really paid them eighty percent of the project so far?
None of the projects. We've paid them eighty percent of a specific line item.
Okay.
So, every line item has a set of rules that we put in our book that says how they get paid. So, two of the line items are called earthwork for basin, there's two basins. And those items, in our original bid, we said they can't earn more than seventy-five percent of it until they've completed a defined, we have the definition of what that would be. The council was generous and raised it to eighty. So, you paid the eighty on both of those items. There are about twenty-five items. So, if they pick the last item, which is the telescoping valve, and earn it, that has a different set of rules. They can go, they can go to a hundred percent if it's functional, but the basins cannot go above eighty right now by default. They can earn other things. So, there's just a lot of items, and each line item has its own rules, and those are things that we, we check every time we get a request. I don't know that it's ever been where they, they've submitted a request and we've submitted it to you. It's never been, nobody's ever submitted one properly to this point, okay?
I think that brings clarity to eighty percent of the overall package versus the line items of what falls within that group of that line item, right? So, you've got twenty-five line items, basically.
Right, and each one of those has its own set of rules.
Understood.
That's what the, so don't get in your mind that they can't earn anything else until they can earn things.
Well, that's what I was thinking. It was eighty percent cap.
And that's, and that's what, that's what Sidney has interpreted too, that once that work is done by those line items, it's due at that point, because it's been completed. It can be requested, I think. Is that fair, Sidney, and your, yes?
Yes, that's correct. That is my interpretation and my guidance as well.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, part number four, Martin General Contractors. They're claiming some work has been done. We're seeing evidence of that. And we recommend moving forward with a time extension with them. They had a pay request, which I had down, but they did not get that pay rolling on time, so it's not, it's not complete. So, we're having to table that. So, they're gonna ask for a time extension. Blake, remind me of the date they're wanting to push that out to, and I got that here somewhere in my packet.
It's from, it's pushing it from February first, twenty twenty-three, to March twentieth of twenty twenty-three.
Forty-seven day extension. So, now they're saying they're gonna be done March twentieth for Martin. So, that's in the pay packet as well.
You're comfortable with that?
We're comfortable with that. Anything, if anything more aggressive than that, I don't, I think they would fail. I don't think they would need it.
Yeah, and they're, they're being aggressive as well, I'm trying to put it in, but they're, they're wanting to get, they're putting in parts as they're coming in as, you know, able.
So, what is their main reason for the request of the extension?
Reason, yeah, supply chain.
There are some pumps that are supposed to be delivered tentatively January twenty-third, which I think is in a week. But the current completion date is February first, so that allows eight, nine days for startup and testing, which is just not feasible, and installing all of it. It's just, it's, they've been having quite a bit of issues with those pumps.
We've talked about supply chain issues before. I'm just trying to confirm if that's still the same.
Correct, yeah.
They keep giving us dates, but then they change the dates.
Well, depending on where they're coming from, that's not a problem. I work in supply chain, I understand.
So, that's where we're at. It's January. This, we've gotta get, I don't know what else I can do, but we've gotta get these projects on board by the spring. We've just gotta do it.
You're on top of it here. This is good.
We are.
This is good.
We're on top of it. So, everything you guys get, we do, we do check these things, so I want you to know that. There's multiple iterations.
Did they do the testing and the compaction around the pipes being good, right?
Excellent question. Excellent question. They did, but...
Here just recent?
We, they did recently. I, they did not, anecdotally, they did not do what we asked them to do.
I'm not surprised.
It's more of a surface level, you know, more of a...
Yeah, Fisher said he was gonna submit testing reports from Cochrane, excuse me, the testing agency. And then bring that to our attention, but they haven't submitted it just yet. We will not move forward on any payment on any line item until we review those materials tested.
He had a testing agency that he has hired?
Yes, yeah, yeah. To test it.
And we haven't seen that test yet. You all have seen that determined.
And he stated that it will be coming, you know, to us, but we're obviously not gonna move too fast until we receive it.
So, he did dig them up and do all that, correct?
No, he only did a surface scratch.
Oh.
He did not, he did not do...
Yeah, I've got, I've got pictures.
Yeah.
Where you at?
So, how far down did we go with tests?
I don't know.
As deep as the teeth are.
Yeah.
As deep as the teeth are of the bucket, probably.
Wasn't a very big spoil pile, let's just put it that way. From what I saw, whenever they installed it, it was nowhere near what that was, so.
Yeah. So, we're gonna have to have some conversations.
That's a pretty critical one there, folks. You know, you know, but I mean, I look to you all. Thumbed down, dear day, it runs over the thumbed down, you know?
Absolutely.
I think that's fair, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Any other questions?
When's the next time you're coming back?
I can come back whenever you want me to come back, but at this point...
A month?
A month sounds about right. I don't think there's been a month.
Give us an update.
Give an update.
What's not happened?
I mean, let's try to be positive.
The pay request that we approved is still out there, right? And they haven't gotten that money correct yet. We asked if it denied. They haven't got that pay request yet.
As far as the...
Pre-yes, yes.
We had thirty-some thousand dollars.
It was, there was a receipt that it's been processed. Now, I don't know if it's here or...
We just received it towards the end of last week.
Good, okay. That's why I want to keep up with that. I think, I think that that, I think that's gonna be interesting to get that check out to them and see what happens at that point, right?
I think those are thirty-first, those kick out, so.
I would say you're gonna see the sign, so.
Well, no, my point is I...
What's going on?
But who's gonna work, you know? They, they, they told us, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think I am, that they needed the pay request because they needed to be able to purchase the things they needed to finish the punch list. They said that very directly to us, correct? So, they're gonna have to take that money they got in their hand and go spend it on a punch list of stuff, or not. And if not, means it probably, you know, they're gonna make some sort of business decision. So, I think that that'll be good, that that's got to that point, and so, thanks for that, thank you.
Absolutely. Do you need me to stick around for ten A and ten B? Or are we good?
I think we understand it.
Okay, just remember, when you approve ten A, I think there's a vote on that. I would approve it minus the Fisher pay request in the packet.
Right, we'll remember to do that. Yep, that's how we'll, that's how we'll, we're ready. Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Appreciate you guys staying on top of this and communicating. I think communication's gotten much better. From your old standpoint, I think some of that earlier on, we felt like we were in dark a little bit, and we didn't work sure what we were getting from you and from Dartmouth West. See, that's got, that communication fills in the blanks for us. We're not here guessing where you guys manage it, what you're looking to, what you, you know, what you're expecting for, right, as the project manager. So, thank you for, I think, a big improvement in that communication and, you know, to translate that to us so we can understand what's going on, just like being able to answer Robert's question, which was a good question, to bring clarity around eighty percent completion, right? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Does he have erosion stuff out there?
Erosion control?
Mm-hmm.
There are some erosion control devices out there.
Are they just out there, or they put up?
The straw bales are functioning. I have seen those.
Yeah, still a few that are misplaced. There's still things that is fifty, sixty percent of it. But we've noted everything with them on erosion control and what needs to be done there. Multiple times.
Thank you. So, for...
Thank you.
I'll connect. All right, folks, that moves us to item eight, new conversation places. Consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve A, Board of Alderman Meeting Minutes, B, Public Works and Utility Committee Meeting Minutes, C, General Government and Public Safety Committee Meeting Minutes, D, Planning and Zoning Minutes, E, Collector's Report, F, The Treatment Report, nine activity reports, and eight financial reports. All as one unless something needs to be changed or noted versus proven by the laws of group that they stand.
I move that we approve Consent Agenda A through H.
Second.
At first and second to approve Consent Agenda A through H, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda fast. That moves, it moves us to nine accounts payable of twelve hundred and fifty dollars.
Seeing some of the expenses on here for the Jefferson Street project, do we have a tally of what, what it cost us to do it?
Which project? The ditch or the...
By the high school, Cross Street and High School.
Ditch, yeah. I think it was pipe-wise, was, the plastic pipe was fifteen thousand. We had costs with dump trucks. We got the water for free, obviously. I think, I would say roughly seventeen-five or eighteen with the rip raft that we had to buy for down at the other end and the concrete box and all that, and so, I would, I don't have a tally to know, but I think around eighteen for that. With pipe being fifteen thousand for that.
Using our labor versus paying somebody to do it.
Right, right. I think they're gonna set the little lid for that box down there tomorrow, so that will be completed.
That's nice work.
So, yeah, they did. They did a good job.
Why did we buy concrete from two different places for the new electric barn?
Just who could bring it to us?
Who could get it here?
Yep.
Headed up to Warren County?
Yep, just who could bring it to us that day in that quantity, so.
I move that we accept accounts payable over one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a grand total of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents.
Second. At first and a close second, to approve the bills over twelve hundred and fifty dollars for four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Moves us into ten finance. A, B, and B and W Centrale Waste Water Reembarkment Request, number eleven. Flagrant is number ten for D and all.
Removing the Fisher, that would be for one one nine six nine four point nine two. Move that we approve the pay request for the wastewater plant for excluding Fisher for a revised total of one hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second. At first and second to accept the reembarkment request for the wastewater of one hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. That moves us to B, another motion. Which is, more or less, C of Centrale Waste Water Treatment Plant, the improvements, reimbursement request number eight. Is that the one for CMUs? And this was the one for two thousand, this was for...
This should be for Martin.
Martin.
For the HVAC system at the work plant.
Two thousand nine seventy-six.
One on page fifteen for Martin.
Yep.
Move that we approve payment request number eight for the water treatment plant for twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Second. At first and second to accept water treatment plant improvement reembarkment request number nine, for twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. We passes. Thank you. That moves us to eleven, legal. Or, that's twenty twenty-three C, Election Ordinance.
Number that bill number two four nine three begin its first reading by title only.
Second.
At first and second, that bill number two four nine three begin its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
And ordinance calling for a general city election to be held on Tuesday, April fourth, twenty twenty-three, the municipal election day, to elect the mayor for a three-year term, to elect three Aldermen for a two-year term, and to elect the city collector for a two-year term. I move the bill number two four nine three begin at second read by title only.
Second.
At first and second, that bill number two four nine three begin at second reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Go ahead.
And ordinance calling for a general city election to be held on Tuesday, April fourth, twenty twenty-three, the municipal election day, to elect the mayor for a three-year term, to elect three Aldermen for a two-year term, and to elect the city collector for a two-year term. I move the bill number two four nine three be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
At first and second, the bill number two four nine three be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Motley, yes. Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Deckard.
Four.
Alderman Rogers. Alderman Magley.
No.
Bill number two four nine three passes. Ordinance number?
Three one five five.
Thank you. That moves us to item B. This has to do with staying with the county, what they're doing as far as sales tax. We don't have any operating businesses right now that this would involve, but in the future, we don't know what we'll have. We'll already have it on the books and be standardized and not scrambling to try to get, get something in after the fact. It's kind of why we talked about this. They asked us if we want to be on the ballot, and we talked with them, so that's what that's all about.
Recreational use only, and does not impact medical?
Correct.
Does not, yeah.
Three percent is just on adult-use recreational marijuana.
So, I would entertain a first reading for bill number two four nine four.
I move that bill number two four nine four begin its first reading by title only. Second.
At first and second, the bill number two four nine four begin its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
An ordinance opposing the sales tax at a rate of three percent on all tangible personal property and retail sales of adult-use marijuana sold within the city of Centrale in Missouri pursuant to Article fourteen, section two point six five of Missouri Constitution. pursuant to Article fourteen, Section two-point-six-five of the Missouri Constitution, subject to approval by the voters of the city of the general municipal election day on April fourth, twenty-twenty-three, designating the form of ballot and directing the city clerk to provide notice of said election. I move that bill number two-four-nine-four be given its second reading by title only. Second.
At first and a second, the bill number two-four-nine-four be given a second read by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, second read please.
An ordinance opposing a sales tax at a rate of three percent on all tangible personal property and retail sales of adult-use marijuana sold within the city of Centralia, Missouri, pursuant to Article fourteen, Section two-point-six-five of the Missouri Constitution, subject to approval by the voters of the city at the general municipal election to be held on April fourth, twenty-twenty-three, designated the form of ballot and directing the city clerk to provide notice of said election. I move the bill number two-four-nine-four be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. At first and a second, the bill number two-four-nine-four be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, roll call vote please.
Alderman Hudson, yes, Hudson.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Four.
Runters.
Four.
Magley.
Yeah.
Uh, bill number two-four-nine-four passes, ordinance number?
Three-one-five-six.
All right. Moves us to C.
I don't see it in the.
I, I don't see the, the, chapter thirty point one.
It goes from, uh, what we just did to the, um, PFAS information.
Sydney?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so, we had on the agenda the ordinance to amend chapter thirty point one, section, uh, thirteen, but it didn't get put into the packet, are we able to pass that ordinance tonight, or vote on that ordinance tonight?
Is it on the posted agenda that was circulated?
It was on the posted agenda, but the ordinance, uh, language was not put out.
But was the title of the ordinance posted on the agenda?
Yes, it was.
And yes, you can proceed.
Amen chapter thirty point one.
Yeah, it says amend chapter thirty point one, section thirty point one dash one-three.
Yeah, so long as the title of the ordinance was included on the circulated agenda, then you can go ahead and proceed.
Wouldn't that be considered the title only?
It would be. So this is the mend.
What is it?
I don't know, that's what, yeah, that's what we have.
My hard copy says, it's gonna be amending Central City Code, section thirty point one dash thirteen, subsection eight, to add installation cost of electric infrastructure to be paid for by the developer or reimburse the city of Centralia for the cost of such materials.
Is that the actual ordinance title that was just read?
That is, hard copy I printed from.
That is the title by title only, so that is.
Yeah, that, that would be the title, so the entire title was not on the agenda, no.
So we'll have to.
And the agen, and the agenda just gives notification that that section was being amended, but doesn't state for what purpose?
Correct.
Yeah, then if it doesn't, if it doesn't state for the purpose, but it just provides general notice, I'm uncomfortable with advising that you guys proceed to vote on this since the full title wasn't posted and it wasn't on the packet.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it. Uh. Uh, ordinance to amend chapter thirty point one, which is C, section thirty, uh, point one dash thirteen, um, will have to be reintroduced, uh, at, at another meeting, the next meeting.
So is the table?
So it should be tabled.
So a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Postpone, postpone.
Actually, actually, you guys can't take action at all, so there doesn't need to be a, a motion table at this point, because no action can be taken. You guys will just choose to place it on the next available agenda.
Got it, thanks.
Thank you.
We end up with a special meeting before our next Board of Alderman meeting.
We could add, we could add it included at that time, maybe not. So if that opportunity arises.
Mm-hmm.
Which? I love special meetings, so I mean.
We did discuss that.
I still love the special meetings. Special, so. Um, that moves us then to D, uh, authorize the mayor to register for PFAS program, uh, a motion. To do that.
So moved.
Second. At first and second, authorize the mayor to register for PFAS program, um, at second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Okay. Moves us to twelve, permit some licensing, you have anything for that? Thirteen, purchasing, anything for that? Uh, old business? No? Okay. Any new business?
And, uh, full-time officer appointments, um, it will be contingent on the results we get from his pre-employment.
Okay.
Physical and drug screen.
So I'll take it under me, the appointments will be, will be waiting for that drug screen for me to make the appointment at that point, or where do I do it?
We can vote on him tonight.
And also passes, that continues to pass it out, okay? Good.
So what do we know about Jeffrey Long?
What's the question?
What do we know about Mr. Long?
Uh, he's, he works for a, a law enforcement agency now as a, basically a transport slash dealer. He, uh, has been there for several years, he's not in his twenties, so that's good. And, uh, he's been around law enforcement since, like, two thousand and six, seven, eight, around there.
I move that we approve the mayor's appointment of Jeffrey Long, contingent on balance of background checks.
Second. At first and second to appoint the full-time officer Jeffrey Long, uh, based upon the passing of, of all background checks. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Cindy Minister?
Uh, December was pretty busy. I'm using my word. Um, in December, I did go to Jeff City for a two-day training for floodplain administration, uh, very informative. Going to, um, be having a phone visit actually with them, uh, we're on, for, uh, it's not like a, an evaluation or an audit, but they have to do so many, like, visits. It can be virtual or in person, um, but since they have so many on that they have to get done in a year, they do, um, we're going to be doing this more with a phone, so I'll be on the phone with, you know, for about an hour in February. Get rid of a lot of the stuff I just learned in December, so it'll be, it'll be good that I had that information for her. Um, and then, um, working on the budget, seeing what's going on with that for the next fiscal year and how we're ending up this fiscal year. Um, and then just lots and lots of meetings. Worked with, um, the crews over, um, with that severe cold snap. Some discussion about what is, should be considered protective gear, um, out in some of that, like, for our newer employees. Some of them, so we have the safety money that we have that, they work. Slam it to me a little bit better, I'm gonna get it wrong. It's where, it depends on where they're hired at.
Yeah, so it's, it's really based upon, you know, I think it rolls over in April. So depending on where they're hired at, they could be working here eleven months or whatever, maybe, I think it's a hundred and fifty a year per employee.
So I know we have at least one employee who's going to be employed here for almost two years before they're ever qualified for any of that, and that's how they buy their boots. Um, and some of their other protective gear that we don't buy from them, so.
I, I get maybe heartburn with that.
Yeah, that's.
We want to protect it.
So what we have is some conversations in the future here, not, some of this is delegated by the union contract, so we kind of have to finish out what that is, but if we have a good idea on what we want to implement after the union contract comes out, that would be, that would be helpful.
You could probably do a letter of agreement with the union to modify that, where we would be okay with a hundred and fifty dollars upfront, but if they don't work X number of months, days.
The year is too bad.
However you want to put it in, that they have to reimburse the, before they get their final paycheck or it's taken from their final paycheck. I mean, that would be a way to allow them to have the money immediately, um, or to be reimbursed for it immediately, but be responsible for it in the long run.
Right.
Starting a new job, you know, explaining the title of the money, trying to get a paycheck or two and keep going, we don't want them having to go with that, the safety product, you know, for them, keeping you.
Yeah, I, I know one of the bigger questions coming from the crews is, I think some departments over years and some departments have not, is, is what is classified as gear that the city provides versus what that, you know? So there is certain items for, like, say, the water department, that the water department provides, whether it be rubber boots or rain gear, stuff like that. Um, and then you've got obviously some specialized equipment for the electric department. So I think the big thing, we were talking about the cold spell was, you know, bibs. Is that, is that classified as something the city should, um, provide, or is that something they need to provide? It's been different, it's different in different departments.
Because we were gonna have negative thirty-five wind chill, and we were gonna have guys up on poles trying to fix the electricity.
You think wind chill's bad down here, get up on pole, I mean, so I mean, my thought is, if they, they do the job, and we're asking whether we tell, they're telling you not to get out in period, right? Bring your dogs and animals in, so forth like that, I think we absolutely should consider that. I would, I would suggest that you all come up with, is that a, a, a black and white list that you have from the departments as of today that we should supply and reduce supply?
Uh, no, it's very.
I would, I would say this is what needs to happen, probably. My department with your all's engagement, I would go back to them and get that very clearly stated, what's needed to brainstorm about it, think about it, have the, have the foreman break it to you.
Right.
And then, then, then let's make sure we don't miss anything, make sure that coveralls would be part of that, okay? Um, for, for cold, super cold, right?
Yeah.
So that's what I would do, I think that one thing we need to do is make sure we, as we do these things, that we put it in right and have it in black and white, where it passes off in generation to generation, gets updated, amended, we have something physical that, this is what the electric department, they have, this is what they have in the water department, this is what they have in the street department. Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
So if we don't have that, we should have.
It's better in the police department, but one thing that's not in there and has not been paid for is their boots.
Yeah, it should be.
And the department uniform too, so I'll be looking at it.
Yeah, we should look at that, I mean, it's no different than saying a factory where you have different jobs, somebody's a hand welder. They, they are providing the leathers they need and the mask to do that job, if they're working in another department, it may just be as simple as gloves, so it can vary by department, but we should come up with that approved list.
We have to prove PPE, this is PPE for, for tools, right?
And, and I would expect, you know, like, street guys and electricians who are out there in that super freezing weather, would require some additional clothing for, uh, on that time, but, and then the water guys, yeah, they're gonna need rubber boots and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I think.
And the other guys won't.
As far as the, the specialized stuff for each department, that's, I think that's been passed down well enough that they all know, you know, each department knows what they need, what they need to provide, but if they really boil down to is, you know, the, the bibs were kind of.
The, the cold weather stuff, it, it becomes a team effort, so.
Yeah.
If you have, if water mains like to break in, really in the cold weather, we know that, we see it all the time, right? So bottom line is you have the street department out helping as well, and, and, and the road, you know, all that kind of stuff, they kind of band together. So I think that that's one thing that would be a common denominator for cold weather, that they would all have an issue with that, right? So.
No, I, I, I like your idea, we'll just get some lists and we'll, we'll run it, look it over, and then we'll let you guys look it over.
Right.
That way we can move forward with that.
Let's document it clearly.
Because nobody gets hired and we go ahead and.
And I would also, you go ahead.
Also, you can put in there that the city will only buy once and every.
Yeah, and then, and then they, we talked about that also, you know, lifespan.
Every year I need a new pair of bibs, no, I mean, those should last several years if they're only used.
Few times.
Handful of times each winter.
Right.
And if they're not camo, and if they're not camo, they need to be bright worn.
Yeah. You've been on a blade with a tree line, hold it there, why does it work, so? We get accused of that all the time anyway, right? People running around together, not working, so. Anyway, that being said, does that make sense, first we go that route? Get that list together and have it really firmly put together.
And if we need to adjust boots for police officers, I mean, I think that's.
I think they've done it in the past, they were asking me about it since I'm, you know, a year here, they, they had done it in the past, so. I don't, I don't know other than that.
Anything? Else?
Nothing else, I'm asking any questions?
Sure. Okay, moves to C Attorney.
Oh wait, one question.
Hold on, hold on, Cindy.
One, um.
Hello.
Are we gonna do, uh, a planning meeting or anything for the budgets, do we need to put, start putting some times on the calendar?
Probably, I'll be getting that information next.
Makes sense? Though, that is, that, that spurs my mind. It, I'm worried, cities and municipalities across the nation are gonna be dealing with a, a new budget year that's different than, than, than years in the past, because materials have gone up so extensively, okay? This isn't gonna be a two or three or four percent increase over prior year for the same operating expenses, right? As far as materials, things you buy, you know, perishables, whatever they be. We know that the, the, the electric department alone, and that, that they have a triple increase, and let's say it, it settles back at double the cost. I don't think we'll see things came back to within ten percent of what they were paying for. The market varied, and I think we'll be seeing large increases, they're gonna come down, but not exponentially back to what they were. So it concerns me as we do our budget, I think we gotta be very, very diligent in making sure that we're taking into account that our toilet paper, our sew, our paper for the office, let alone the other things out here in the field that we have to replace, our regulars, the consumable, right? Uh, fuse lengths, switchgear, all that kind of stuff, right? Um, it's gonna be extremely more expensive, and we were talking, and we were talking about just today, um, the, the, the salt we get and, and, I mean.
Lot.
The line for the, uh, uh, water plant, and there's a chemical that goes with that, but it's went from four thousand dollars a quarter average.
To eight?
Eight thousand dollars. So you, you know, now we're talking about sixteen thousand dollar increases just in that alone here. So those things start to pile up really big in a column of extra cost, it's a cost you never inhabit because of the proportional expense of it going up. It could be detrimental, there's gonna be people getting trouble with this thing, across, any, any place you've got a budget. So I'm just saying, we need to be very, very, I think, as we do our planning, we need to be very, very, um, thoughtful about that.
Yep.
Uh, because it's not going away, and it's not going away right now, so. And, and, and good will be whatever it settles down to a couple of years from now, and that may not be great at all, again. But you give back something you already got. Unfortunately, I don't think it's gonna work that way, so we'll see, but something to keep in mind, a good, good thought of us doing that business planning and.
It's gonna be careful of our capex and stuff.
Yeah. We don't wanna be cheap.
We gotta, we have to keep investing.
We won't be cheap, but we, we need to be prudent and thoughtful with what we're doing and, 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 you know, we put things on to the fourth quarter before because the fact was we wanted to make sure that had we get through, you know, it, it was completely the opposite last time it's been on revenues, right? Nobody knew what was gonna happen with that, but this here is here to stay. And so the third quarter is gonna be where you're trying to balance where you're gonna fish for the last year, so I think we gotta be really careful, so. Just a thought for us to keep in mind as we move forward with that, so, thank you. You're on that, all right. Um, that moves us now to you, Cindy, the C Attorney, at your, your platform.
Yes, so everybody should be aware that the legislature is now in full swing, so they have obviously gone back to Jefferson City. The Missouri Municipal League will once again be putting together a document of legislative priorities that cities might want to take a look at. Um, I will be coordinating with Tara and with the mayor on that list, and obviously will be circulated to the board as well, but there may be some topics that the city itself wants to weigh in on, you know, maybe even be called to testify about that in Jefferson City. There's nothing major on the radar that has, like, caught anyone's significant attention so far about, you know, what we would consider controversial bills that would truly impact cities in, like, a detrimental fashion, but we're only two weeks in, so there's still time for, uh, for those sorts of bills to be filed. But so far, nothing seems to be extraordinarily, um, controversial yet, but that's gonna be coming up, that's what I'm gonna focus on along with obviously the continued pieces of litigation that the city has as well, that has been, had, had dominant focus at least the last month, and will probably continue to be so through March.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Cindy Clerk, what do you have for us?
Um, just a couple of things, reminder, the NML Central Regional Lunch and Meeting is. Just a couple of things, reminder, the MML Central Regional luncheon meeting is January twenty-fifth, a couple of folks could go, but if you want to attend that, let me know and we'll get you registered. Yep, several conflicts, but, also, your annual personal financial disclosure, we haven't done that, I think Catherine had, these stories would be that, is required, so.
Well, I have that one.
Yep, so you can do that online, and I can get you that.
Yours are up, me and Ray liked it, you gotta do it anyway, you're, you're.
Ethics, that, for ethics.
Yeah, the ethics, yes.
Yeah, I haven't gotten a notice either.
So, I can send you that link online, it's pretty simple.
I know, I do it for January. I had to call them to find out what my number was, because I.
You will have to, yeah, I don't think you'll have to.
Alright, when's the deadline now, yesterday?
The deadline for Canada's was the tenth, but yours is soon.
Still going out.
Does anybody else have a mail contest?
Oh, yeah.
Tara and Harold.
The twenty-fifth, you mean? Twenty-fourth? Yeah, I, I would, but I can't, I'm out of town.
I think Tara, Marilyn and Harold.
You might figure something.
Carol, Marilyn, Harold.
Unless somebody else wants to jump in.
Sounds like good rugby today. Once Matt wants to go.
Matt wants to go. Matt's driving.
Matt just recently completed his Missouri Government Institute training, haven't gotten the official okay from MML, but.
But he hasn't really passed the picture on that.
So, what more can we ask him? So, you enjoyed that wonderful FEMA training?
That was hard burn.
Congratulations.
A real quick thing, been talking about the clothing, it comes up about every week what the department has meeting, having discussions, we've switched from Airmark for the clothing, uniforms and rugs and such, to Universe, still working out a lot of issues with them, so we're trying to set the meeting for them to, for the regional, for district sales manager to come and have a sit-down, and we can try to work out some issues we're having.
Yeah, thanks, it could be done better.
Yep, deliveries, clothing, so hopefully that will pan out to be a big switch for us.
I've been through several of those switches, there's always.
There's, there's.
There's always a, a period of working through things.
How long have we had them though?
I believe April, March.
So, we've had them almost a year, and we're still having problems with them?
Yeah, same problems too.
Well, but I would say, but have, have we requested them to come in and sit down to meet, you get the regional manager's gonna lose his money out of it, if he gets their attention, or district manager, whatever, that's what.
Requested, the problem there is that our local guy, delivery whatever, part of the problem, he's, he's boss, his manager is leaving, so they're switching those, so they're trying, had a meeting set up, and now he's leaving, so trying to get the new one. Better get him narrowed down.
Run our fifth delivery person, different, yes.
Are you all on top of this, sound like you are.
Marilyn has been, every time we get an invoice, and there's something that's.
Marilyn's spending about ten minutes a week, it's really not that.
Maybe I should ask people.
Start to get fired up there, I think.
We're working on it, but just so you know.
She's probably, she, she can, she can label it off if you keep asking questions.
Do we have a contract for them?
Yes.
How long's the contract for?
Two years.
Probably a built-in evergreen period unless you give them notice and assertive about that.
Well, we have to give them a chance, and then a ninety-day notice, and then if it's not corrected, we're gonna have ninety days.
So, the contract can be terminated based upon a ninety-day notice in, in efficiency?
But it has to be a substantial deficiency, and they refuse to not want, they have to not want to fix it.
Right.
Do you know this company?
No, I've read many of those contracts and worked with those contracts many a time over the years, so.
Exactly correct, we have to give them up, we need to correct, so we're working on that.
So, if you need some other eyes on the contract, let me know. Been through that one, with you and for you guys.
That's reasonable, alright, yeah, alright, keep an eye on that, will you?
Yep.
Alright, I'll start asking you all, President, keep you at an eye, okay? Had you, whatever, in here.
You're going in for both bullets on?
No.
Close session?
Oh, we're going to, yes, we are.
For both? And moving, we go into closed session, during the meeting, the Board of Alderman may elect to go into closed session, hold a closed vote, and the purpose of such closed session and closed vote shall be, one, as provided for under section six one zero point zero two one one, of the statutes of Missouri for legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, two, as provided for under section six one zero zero two one three, of the rights statutes of Missouri for hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting a particular employees by public governmental bodies. Second.
I have a first and second to go into closed session, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, we're going to closed session.
Roll call.
Oh, yeah, got, yeah, please, roll call, please.
Oliver, Percy, Huntley, yes, Hudson.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Four.
Deckard.
Yes.
Rogers.
Four.
Megley.
Yeah, asked, we're going to closed session, don't figure it's gonna be real long, but. Alright. Alright, we have, we took a, there were no votes taken, we're back in open session, there were no votes taken, and both items were discussed in closed session, that we went into closed session for, but no votes were taken, so we're back to return to open session, and I'm at number twenty, which has may arise, do we have any as may arise?
Where are we at on trailers, people living in around town? We've talked about it several times.
The RVs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that, I'm sorry.
And the ones that are parked on the street?
Yeah, yeah, I will get to working on that ordinance.
I would ask Sydney for some help on that.
Yeah, because I want to make sure the language, because we do have something, but it's not.
We want to tie the trailers in, in maybe two different ordinances, but we want to, we want to clean it up, right, for living in them, as well as just parking.
Keeping them out of the city right away.
The right of ways, is a critical deal too, so, that's another.
That will address most of the issues, but I can't live in them.
Right, it's a different thing in itself, I think.
As we've discussed before, it's one thing if somebody's there visiting for a week or two in the middle of summer or graduation.
Yeah, I mean, the people down at North Island are sick of looking at a bus that's been there for almost a year, people have been living in.
With peace on it?
They're, yeah, they're sick of looking at it.
Oh, yeah, here?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I've had five neighbors in the neighborhood complain about it, so.
They're waiting on Woodstock.
As may arise, I will say this, we talked a little bit about it, we're gonna get people asking us about their water, we took the letter out, it's absolutely safe drinking water, and we've talked about that again, we've talked about, and it's not being softened like it was before, our goal is to have it back to that, but it'll probably be a year before that happens. And it may cause some, some sediment in your, in your aeration streams.
Yeah, maybe your areas.
And that's all you can do, right, so, just, just so we all know, we're gonna be, we're gonna have it come to us, and we're gonna have to go out and start doing PMs, the PMs on our, on our vows, we'll have to work the vows in full cycle back, auto monthly or, or bi-monthly, to make sure they don't get, we can't use them.
Somebody said they won't reimburse for their water.
Huh?
Because they pay a higher rate.
Who said that?
I had a citizen, because we raised the rates, because we put the slacker in.
Well.
And now it's not working.
Well, we didn't raise the rates for the slacker.
Well, I get that.
They look at, they look at that.
Yes.
They look at that.
And now they're paying for soft water, and they're not getting it, so they think they ought to get some money back. I won't tell you what I told them.
We're working. Well, good, we knew we could count you in, so that's, as may arise, I had, I would entertain.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
The first and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're gonna adjourn, thanks.